Yes, yeah, she was here Thursday, but I've heard about tonight.
Okay. Awesome, meeting called to order. My internet's not working. Does anyone want to read the landing? Commission, a landing note? Make me stumble through it on my shelf.
We'd like to acknowledge we are on the traditional land of a rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area a home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today.
Great, thank you. Any issues with the agenda? If not, can somebody make a motion to approve?
Please don't move.
Any second? Awesome, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. And the May minutes? Is that approved? Previously?
No, eighth were last Thursday, but May 14th is still dropped.
Alrighty. Were there any edits or comments to that?
Just a minor one in the attendees, I think they might have spelled Maddie's name wrong.
Alright, so aside from the correction for Maddie, anybody else? Okay, oh, yep, I see that. Great, is there a motion to approve the minutes with the correction?
Well, if somebody was here.
Is there a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Fabulous. Okay. Alright, so our July meeting date, we're done with the special meetings, I believe, and now we're just sticking to the once a month, and we have July 9th.
Correct, July 9th is the next regular meeting. Thank you again for the six special meetings since January. Then also discussion Thursday night on a, an open house, public hearing. And the August regular meeting, let's do the possible recommendation.
Great, and I think on the, the meeting last week, what you guys said we'd be talking about today is you were going to work on some actual dates for the meeting, or for the public hearing?
We did, we were zoning in around the third week of July, it seems, in the discussion. Nothing in June is possible, fourth to July week is gone. Not even plausible, and then a little buffer, and then a little window that seems to work.
Okay, so that, the 15th through the 19th somewhere.
I hope I wrote it down. I thought there was one date that we verified there were no other conflicting public meetings. I think that might have been the 10th, and then we did away with that because of the tree board took it. And essentially the week after. Yeah. And then Yanni sent an email to the group with some
For two of you at least.
Yeah.
I think I sent the two of you.
The two of us about your complex.
Yeah. So somewhere between the 12th and the 24th of July seem available. Or, or meeting, which we, open house, for the open house, okay. By July 9th, we'll have a better formatted product document. And then the open house is intended to kind of check in and say, what's your feedback? Then hold the public hearing and then the recommendation.
And so according, everybody had confirmed, we're going to do it actually at LFP conference, right?
It, well, I would say confirm, but that's another, yeah. Because of the less formal, more baggy. And then we were going to call, still to you, yeah, chat.
So do we want to firm up a date right now?
I'm in on any day you choose.
Okay, so we're saying between the 12th and the 26th?
And we have Christina from SCJ who also heard of that discussion if we include them.
Okay. I think obviously you want to stay away from Fridays. People having long weekends, honestly, probably the Monday too, so we're looking at Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Hi there.
I think I found about the 16th. I think that was thrown out.
That's good for me, good for, you know, good for your days. Everybody else? How about you Christina, does July 16th jive with your schedule for a open house?
Yes, I can make that work.
July 16th, and then the hour, should we talk about that?
Not that specific yet.
Probably want to firm that up too. We want to stick with the seven o'clock time, or well, we're battling kids bedtime, that you're dealing with dinners and stuff between five and six, so I want to have a suggestion as to the time if you feel strongly one way or another.
I think when we did the parks open house, we started five or four thirty-five.
It was a lengthy session in case people wanted to get it over with or stay late.
Yeah.
So, but I don't remember the exact time.
It was, it started at four thirty or five, and then went maybe till seven.
Okay.
So.
With schools out in July, so that's one badge.
You're doing a four to
Or just that, or four to six.
Yeah.
Four to six. Well, I think we want to, since we're only doing it once, let's make it wide enough that, you know, people can get in, feel like they can get their experience, you know, so I don't want to make it too short, I don't know what we're doing. Three hour day or something, but I'm
I think four might be too early, because people are still getting off work, so what I would think. You know, and then they're finding back
For different people.
I have to mean like
There are different people at four.
Yeah, I mean, for me, with kids and working full time, I would go up for it, just to kind of get, yeah, but that's I know we're not speaking to just me, so, yeah, but
Four to seven.
Four to seven?
Ten, yeah, that's it.
Okay, also, I wanted to put in the minutes that, uh, we stepped up last meeting, that was great, thank you. That was your audition, you're in now, like, you're, you're the, you're the chair now. Thank you, really appreciate it.
We had also talked about where the, the cops just kind of incorporating a little bit of education piece for the community on the state legislative changes, because that's going to be important, and then maybe we talked about, we landed on maybe filming part or all of it, so that it could be then available on the website, so if people can't make it and they want some education, maybe we could even chapter it a little bit. You know, go to this first 30 minutes, if you want education on this, go to the next 30 if you want, and something, whatever the rest of the agenda is.
I love that, especially for having one day. People are missing. As far as the education, is that something I assume that we're leaning on Christina for?
That's it.
Yeah, okay, and would it be like a live presentation mixed with like a one pager or two pager of, you know, that people can take with them?
So my, my concern with doing a live presentation is that either we would potentially miss a lot of people if it's going to be such a long open house, or we'll have to repeat ourselves, you know, periodically, like maybe we do it at the top of the hour or something. Or on the half hour, just to make sure that as many people as possible could get that, so I guess logistically, it can be a little more challenging to have a live presentation. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, I'm just saying that we need to think through kind of how we're going to offer that. And whether it makes sense to do that as a presentation, or as kind of like a, like an educational station with like a staffed person who can talk through those changes and take questions.
So, so I attended the Briar, one of the Briar events. And they did have an open session where the, where the planning director and consultant was answering questions, it was a fiasco. It was, it was kind of messy.
Yeah.
So, so it just seems to me that like an educational center or a place where people can go and get the information that they need, ask questions is a good idea.
Versus a presentation?
Versus a presentation.
And we could have some, like some takeaway information, hey, you want to know what's changed with housing, here's, you know, here's a one-page summary, or what's up with climate, grab this one-page summary, so we could do something like that. And then have, have a dedicated staff person who can give you know, some information and then provide additional resources or collect contact information for follow-up as well.
Yeah, I think the, the handout and one-page flyer is pretty essential, especially if you have parents and just one person comes, so the talking points, so that would be
Oh God, I have a two-year-old, so my entire perspective on these events has changed dramatically.
So, okay, awesome. So the Briar one, that one was, it's funny, I meant to ask, I'm good friends with the Mary goes toward yours, I prefer Briar, and I meant to ask him how that works, so now I have a little bit, so I want to ask again.
Yeah, and there were several events.
Okay.
I did, I mentioned one.
Okay. Okay, so how does everybody feel about having an information hub? And I assume we're going to all try and be there, be present for that full period of time and just talk to people one-on-one, I guess, or anyone that wants to chat with us? Pretty good with that?
Yeah. I'm also open to innovative thoughts on, are there, is there a station where somebody can press, like, and watch a short video about, say, the state law changes? I mean, people just respond to different stimuli, so I'm looking for any creativity from our consulting team or others. I feel like some of the design of community engagement, I've like gotten too old, and I see, I see a lot of cool stuff being done that I wasn't doing.
You know, I think, I mean, for me, I would personally like a presentation, because if I walk in there and I don't know anything, I'm kind of like, I don't really know where to start, so I might not be as engaged as I would, where if you're coming out with five, six, seven, hey, these are the things that were, that we want to share that have changed, that might help, but I understand you might not want to present that every 30 minutes. Is there a short snippet of a video that, that we could maybe, I don't want to loop it, but we could have a couple of stations where people can learn that? And it's something too that could be shareable, just like a two and a half, three minute, not to bore anyone, but at least get some of the major talking points to get the juices flowing for people to engage with us.
We might be able to do a like a voiceover slideshow with some, you know, some graphics on, on the slides. We might be able to get something like that done in this timeframe.
Great.
Like maybe a complaint on a, on a snippet piece and then new state law. That could be cool.
Yeah, what's nice too is that you can share that online for people who didn't, who didn't make it and still want to know.
Yeah. And then the recording that you've mentioned of that, I think that's great.
Anything we have kind of prepared, it might be good to do a scrub of our microsite beforehand, and just make sure everything is up to date, because we still have some old stuff on there about the survey that's now closed, that the timeline for the project, which has some events, dates that we targeted that are now long since passed, so we might want to do a scrub of that. And then following the event, if there's anything like the PowerPoint with the audio and the other things, we can kind of put them out there so that ends up being the more current.
That's great. Christina, I fully recognize that, we're like, hey, can you create this stuff within like 30 days? So not to expand on that, is there anything that you feel that would be great for this community, or any other kind of media tool that we could leverage without, you know, being a significant lift for you guys to, to make the most out of this one three-hour period that we have?
Yeah, so I do think that we can put together some social media announcements, and I would encourage everyone to share those broadly with your networks, anywhere where you are connected to other people, and we'll, we'll figure out whether we want to do flyer, or like a business card, postcard kind of handout thing. So I would, I would be leaning on you all to, to kind of take those materials around as broadly as possible and talk about it via social media, if you engage in those platforms. I do think it might be a little bit difficult to connect with youth, given that school is out right now. Or about to be out, depending on which district you're in. But it would be, it would be great if there are summertime youth-oriented activities, if we could try and capture some youth voices.
To capture both youth voices?
Yeah, youth voices, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I have some thoughts, I think that people are going to be interested in whether there are going to be changes in their neighborhood.
Yeah.
And the town center. And one of the things that was good about the survey is it asked questions about particular zones or areas with, with mapping. And so I, this may be too complicated, but people may want to know, okay, what happened with those answers that we gave on what we'd like to see at Southern Gateway, or something like that, and I realize that starts to blur into the implementation, but there's a level of it that is the policy level, where you all have made some initial judgment calls, right? Hopefully, you know, leading towards your recommendation. So it may be too complicated for this timeframe, but I do think that people, if there was some you know, big map, and what we had for the park is a big, you know, Google Maps version of the park that people could look at, so just a question, if we could do like a big map of LFP and, and show maybe only where it's going to change, right, or something like that, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to think about people coming and saying, I don't really know anything about comprehensive planning, so what's happening in my neighborhood?
Yeah.
What's happening at town center? You know, which, and for town center, not much really is the, the answer.
And it also avoids that's why I saw in Briar is that blaming cities for the changes versus the, these are state mandates that need placed.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's
People are eventually, when they realize that there, there's a lot of unawareness of the state mandates, so.
I, I love that idea, it's, I think, the average person that comes in, you know, my hope is that
I don't know, yeah, I could do, pull that off, but I was just thinking that was a great part of the survey.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, I think that we could put some, at least you know, a couple of maps together that shows, you know, here's, here's kind of the stuff that's affected by recent policy changes. Here are some of the potential impacts of the recommendations that we are making, and let, let people see where their neighborhood falls.
If it's possible, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we can, I think we can work with that. David, I might need to pick your brain a little bit to figure out the best way to graphically represent some of the housing changes, but.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about it. Good evening all. Good to see all commissioners. Yeah, I, I, there is a little hesitancy to put out a map that shows, you know, these are the potential parcels that would be, or I guess, we have maps that show these are, are the residential areas that are affected by, say, middle housing in ADUs. There's some other maps that have been produced that are saying, you know, you could make some changes here, but no decisions have been made. So I, I think, if we're sticking to the, to the state mandates, that's, that's a good idea, just being sort of educational, this is what is required, right? Because there's still a lot more work to be done, I think, related to like, say, middle housing, if there's, there's other decisions to happen in the future, so.
Right, and then, you know, there, there are the implications with parking around transit stops, and some of those things that we could show that are driven by the state requirements. So people would be able to see that.
It might be good if there were a component of the materials at the open house, to Deputy Mayor Bodie's point, just showing people what we heard from the survey results, and I think you already had some great slides prepared that you shared with us previously. And so I'm just trying to think of anything that could be pulled out of prior materials that's ready and standalone, and just making that easily accessible on the site, and then accessible maybe at stations or otherwise at the open house, so that people can kind of gravitate to what's most interesting, without having to recreate the wheel of things you've already prepared.
Yeah, I think I'd like to have a kind of a what-we-heard station with an option for like, hey, something to add, and a place where people can drop follow-up comments.
So what I've heard in terms of deliverables between now and our 19th date is Christina and your team are going to create some shareable social media announcements for us to say this is the date and the time, location. And if the charge is on us to, to disperse that, I assume LFP City, LFP City will be sending that out as well. And then you will also be doing, if you can, PowerPoint voiceover, just a couple-minute educational piece on what the laws are. Another, a map, again, to visually show the areas that we're talking about, again, only affected by law, not what we're considering, so just the facts. And then if you can pull some survey results, but it sounds like you have a little section for that, but to really have those readily available, so people know what the outcome was of the survey.
Can we step back a couple steps, and so we've been talking about pieces of this, of this event, of the elements of this event. Have we talked about the overall structure, the overall organizational outline of this, of this event?
That's Well, it's a public outreach item, right? It's primarily in my interest to get interest in the process and awareness. So that when you hold your public hearing recommendation, and then council has a series of meetings, a public hearing and a recommendation. You know, the worst example is someone stands at the podium and says, I found out about this yesterday. What do you do? And so it's, it's to at least get there, if the open house is a success, but not well-attended, it moves the needle towards that effort. So it's at least that. And then on the better side, it is an opportunity for more feedback, if it's not a public hearing, so that's
Format wise, it's a drop-in format.
Drop-in format.
That's what I have understood.
Right.
So you could come at four, you could come at four thirty, you could come at six. You can just pick stuff up, or you can engage with the people who are there and discuss the issues you're concerned about, so it's up to you, drop-in format, I think that answers, that's what you were
Exactly, the follow-up question to that is Christina, will you be organizing?
I, I can, I can figure out like, how many stations, what should be at the stations, all of that kind of thing. Somebody else is going to need to sort out the actual space and tables, but I can, I can take care of the rest. I can be there, I have some staff that can join me. You all should be there if you can. Although I do, we, Mark, do we need to be mindful of quorums?
And so forth, I'm sure every minute of my time between now and July 16th is already taken.
Totally, yeah.
To the logistics, the venue, the setup, the being there, the facilitating, the follow-up, the references, documents, et cetera, however best, but noticing and awareness and coordinating with other staff to get the word out is what scared me on my way to work today, so that will be
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, we, we can't do another citywide with the survey, we, we spent my budget. And we have an open house, two public hearings, and various other things coming, and I'm going to exceed that budget by far. But short of a citywide mailing or anything like that, we'll use whatever resource we can to, including the website, get the word out, so the next category is volunteerism, you know, participation, anything, any ideas you have. Groups, school districts, soccer clubs, anything to at least raise awareness so that there is some attendance of university parties. We had the discussion Thursday night, what if two people show up? That's still a success for me. It's worth having. It's unfortunate, but we will
Trick.
Yeah, and not just, we did it, but in a sense of whatever happens in that event, as informal as it is, that we help out whoever chooses to come. Better form.
So getting word to our nonprofits is always good. So, and to the extent you guys can reach out to PTAs, that was very helpful with the parks. Made a big difference, so.
I can do that, I actually just got a list of all the parents from a script lady, and they all agreed to take emails from me. So I will do that.
You know, it's going to be getting out, so PTA, yeah, it's good.
Does anybody go to the church? The sports factory?
That's good church.
Yeah, anybody here?
I don't, but I can, I can go there.
So Civic Club, Beach Club, Stewardship Foundation, those would be key ones.
Okay.
Yeah, stewardship, screenkeepers.
Uh, screenkeepers, stewardship are kind of linked, yeah.
Yeah. Email, e-blast, those types of tools we have, and we can do those categories.
Right. Is there any, is there issue with, if, if they're creating the announcement, like if I print it out on my own deal, and that live right next to like first part of the card?
Any questions like this, because I don't have an issue with it.
Okay, I just won't tell you.
Well, Melissa said it's an open house, so that you can have a core, but it's informal, it's legislative, so we're not doing anything wrong. And it's not a no-spo public hearing, so it's pretty flexible. What I can guarantee is someone else will have the problem. But that I can't control, yeah.
I mean, we're creating materials with the intention that they are shared broadly, however that happens.
Okay.
So.
Alright, so we're good, there any questions on that? Melissa, how are you doing? Good?
There's actually a party coming up at the Civic Club, not, I think it's like, not next weekend, but the weekend after. The day after school, so that might be an opportunity to bring some materials down there, it's just like, you know, sort of like opening night on Friday.
Wait, are you saying that school is still in session for another week?
School, doesn't it, I think it's very short, it gets out on the 21st, right?
It's the 18th.
Is it the 18th?
Uh, we have a block party on the 8th to celebrate school.
Okay, I'm sorry, my kids don't go to the, the, the school, but, but I saw something from LFP, from the the Civic Club, I think it's on the 21st.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that might be a good time to to have something available. Since everybody will be there.
And we have a e-blast deadline to the city clerk of next Wednesday, so website and that document will be our first move. And then we'll build off that.
Uh, are you guys closed for Juneteenth? That is next Wednesday.
Yes.
So will that closure affect that deadline?
No, deadlines march on.
Okay. I just want to make sure if I have to get you materials a day ahead.
No, oh, no, not for your materials, no, this is awareness of the date and committing to that date in that first e-blast, internal deadline, separate from everything else we're doing.
Okay, do you need, like, I'm just wondering if you need a graphic or anything for that?
Um, maybe, only because Joanne retired last week, so.
I know, I'm so sorry for your loss.
Otherwise it'd be easy, I'd just say, hey, get the files we sent you and pick one. But we'll, we'll work on it between now and Tuesday night.
Okay.
That'd be a good start.
Questions or comments with that? Good. I think I skipped over public comments, I've heard the bit that you shared about we're no longer doing it online, does it, do you have written comments that we need to, or public comments?
None that I've received, no.
Alrighty. Um, so, we also got a robust report from you last week, did you have anything else you wanted to share?
No, pretty much I covered a lot, so. Anyway, just, you know, that the big things are, we're no longer accepting online public comment, at least for the time being, until things settle down, and the budget process also starts in September, but has to wrap up by the end of November, and that's the 25 and 26 billion budget, and it's going to be, so there are going to be two trains running on the track here. So there are going to be two trains running on the track here in the fall.
And to speak to that, if I'm I'm pleased that we have a pretty good date for the open house. If that's the case, to honor the overlap in the transition from clinic commission to council. Um, which is primarily a staff transition. The August meeting then becomes open for upstairs official notice public hearing recorded. Uh, as an activity, if we can aim towards that. Yep, it's with our overall timeline of transition or budget and. The document itself, the feedback, more input and then a recommendation.
Great.
Good, thank you.
All right, should we hand it over to our trusted consultants?
Thank you. Uh, all right, let me share my screen. My friends, we are closing in on the end here. Uh, and it feels really good, at least for me. I hope it feels the same for you all. Um, okay, can everyone see this okay?
Yep.
Great. All right. Um, so uh, looking ahead uh to just July and August uh right now. Um, heads up on what's coming your way. So I am planning to have a final version of the community survey summary available. Uh, we have already discussed the public open house, uh, and we are hoping also for a public hearing and recommendation. Uh, at the July regular meeting. Uh, I do expect to come back and chat with you in August a little bit um about implementation. Uh, we also do have some continued work on middle housing that we will be uh discussing with you. Um, and this will be kind of the big handoff for city council uh in this timeframe as well, so. Um, July is the big push, take a breather, but our work's not done. Um, sometime in here, we will also, uh, or you all at least will also likely um hear some more about climate work. Uh, although um I think Mark will be sharing that update. Any questions on what's coming next?
Oh.
Okay. All right, then let's talk comp plan element updates. Um, these are the same slides that I've been sharing for months now, but just as a reminder and for posterity. We are aiming for regulatory compliance with the GMA and its amendments. Uh, recent amendments uh with King County's countywide planning policies and with PSRC Vision twenty fifty. Uh, and we are planning to do that while also uh addressing the community's vision and priorities. Uh, those include balancing environmental preservation, economic vitality in neighborhoods, supporting diversity. And a variety of perspectives, uh establishing, uh, I guess not establishing, maintaining. A vibrant town center as the heart of the community and ensuring that neighborhoods remain safe and are well connected. We have the usual policy framework where goals are our high level. Statements with policies becoming more specific, uh, and then actions, implementation actions being. Very clear in terms of what that next step is to move us toward achieving that goal. Um, and with that, I'm gonna hand it over to David to talk economic development and then we will take a look at Parks, Trails and Open Spaces.
Great, well, thank you. Um, so I I do have any slides prepared today because um the discussion guide that was shared with you. That I know you all worked through last um last week sort of covers it all. Another um Mark filled. Fill me in that there are, you know, a couple of items that were brought up, questions specifically related to um some of the regional um. There's sort of PSRC and county level policies and how that relates to your local economic development um element, element. Um, and just some other questions about some of some of the wording or maybe some some additions that we might want to make. Uh, related to some of the new policies that were added in there, so. Um, I guess if you all have that discussion guide at hand, uh, we can can move through that. Um, and I think that'll that'll sort of bring us, bring us through all the the big questions efficiently. Uh, just as a reminder, so Christina just brought up, right, how um. We're working towards GMA compliance uh and coordination with with Vision twenty fifty. As well as the King County countywide planning policies. Economic development is not a requirement um from the state, from the GMA. It is a recommendation. Uh, but because you already have an economic development element and we are updating it, um, that is not. Um, not necessarily relevant, but there's far less guidance and restrictions in terms of and requirements on local jurisdictions. In terms of how they shape their economic development element um in comparison to housing. So um, that said, there is a lot of of new uh regional guidance in Vision twenty fifty. And the regional economic strategy as well, which is the the um, you know, the regional SEDS, uh, comprehensive economic development strategy. Uh, as well as King County countywide planning policies, a lot of which speaks towards um support for for local. Uh, minority owned, women owned, small businesses, um, as well as. Expanding access to to living wage jobs. Um, that's some of the the language that was. That was put into or sort of amended to some of your previous policies. Um, and an emphasis on expanding some of the, you know, the growing regional industries, um, which isn't. Necessarily relevant to a place like like Lake Forest Park that has limited availability of 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 commercial and industrial land. Or um, no, no industrial lands to to expand, at least in some of those those industries, so. Um. With that, that's just sort of my high level intro. Uh, I think we can work through our discussion questions and. Um, we'll lean on you all to sort of bring up the questions that that were raised in your your meeting last week, uh, so we can can hone in on any. Specific policy changes or direction that we we need to get included in the element. Does that sound good?
Yeah, I think, you know, Sam, maybe you have a good uh. Idea of what some of it was to, because some of the questions that were raised specifically by two folks are not here right now, so. But Mark, also you took some notes on them as well, right?
And shared them with Christina did.
Perfect. Great.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, Melissa was there.
Pop quiz, Melissa.
All right, so uh number one with the balance and sustainable local economy. It's sticking out there that we want to chat. I know a couple of things that we flagged it was to get more of a better understanding from our consultants on why it was there. But anything with section one?
Yes. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I was just gonna say, my recollection from the discussion for question number one and then policies one point one and one point two was. Uh, we were just generally curious about the need to include that in the intent. And I think maybe there was some red exits of including uh both of the edits on one point one and one point two. Given kind of the character of Lake Forest Park and, you know, the fact that it isn't really a um. The same emphasis on kind of jobs.
Yes, um, yeah, Lake Forest Park is is certainly a uh a bedroom community historically and as continues to be. Uh, there there's a major emphasis, right, regionally toward to to move the region towards a better jobs and housing balance. Um, it rightly rightly said that Lake Forest Park is is not a place that's going to to move much further in that regard. Um, at least not not uh very quickly, just due to the nature of your of your land use. Um, so that that pursuit of a range of of job opportunities to to have a closer balance between jobs and housing. Is very much driven by that regional policy direction. Um. Uh, if if you feel that it's out of, it's about a character with with the city, though, there's no. Mandate that requires, say, you to to keep that language in your your policy language there. If you'd prefer to to move back towards uh, you know, a balanced, balanced local economy as it was written previously. Or um, or any other policy language that you think would better characterize sort of your economic development goals. That's something we could. We could wordsmith on on one point one and then similarly in in one point two, there's that emphasis on living wage job growth. Um, which is again our regional, regional direction. Um, there are in particular growth industries, uh, as I was mentioning, that are that are called out within regional economic development. Um, policy, those are aerospace, information, communication, technology, maritime, military and defense. Life sciences and global health, tourism, transportation and logistics and business or professional services. And then so those are all, you know, not particularly relevant, um, most of them at least to to Lake Forest Park. Um, but the idea of having a a greater base of of living wage or higher paying jobs or just. Of maybe a greater diversity of commercial or economic opportunity um is maybe a better way of framing that.
For me, it's since it's not a required element, I would think we'd want, my my thought would be to. Stick with what we have or if you had that better word, so that that makes it a little bit more broad, I'm open to that too. That's real to know.
For me, the the reason I'm kind of more in the maybe, maybe keep it camp is the thing that keeps nagging me. About our economic development reality is that we re-zoned the gateway over ten years ago. And on the commercial part of it, nothing's happened. So we do want some more jobs and businesses that create a better balance. And that's probably the one concentrated area where that could happen or it's not happening now, so. But I I don't care if we exactly keep these words, but I don't think that's a problem. I think we, you know, it would be pretty awesome if we had some actual, you know, significant employment pop up in that area. Um, what you said about the emerging industries or or whatever the term bar you use was when I did my little walking tour of their Southern Gateway. I didn't know there's like a, it's like a commercial lab of some kind or some kind of interesting place tucked in there. It's like. You don't know where those jobs are going to show up. They can show up anywhere, so I'm I'm comfortable with the proposed language, but I wasn't in the discussion. So I'm not sure I captured everything by listening to um.
I think my perspective um from the discussion last week is I'd be more aligned with. Ashton and kind of inclined to revert back to the language we had before. I think on policy one point one, you know, there was a desire to be coming out of. Um, you know, the feedback of the survey to have a more balanced local economy with kind of fit. For the scale of Lake Forest Park, kind of diverse businesses like serving the community. But there wasn't necessarily a clear theme of feedback that we really needed a ton more jobs in the community. Um, and personally, I had expressed that I didn't feel like, given the data that had been shared on commuting in and out of the city. That we really needed to have a whole lot more jobs to kind of incline incline more congestion on the streets and more overtaxing. If the limited mass transit system we have to kind of have people commuting in and out of the city. And the same thing on on one point two, it just seemed like this was a note on living wage jobs that only shows up here. And nowhere else in the comp plan. And it wasn't really a theme of feedback we had heard from the community. There certainly was a desire to expand the current economic base, uh, but there wasn't necessarily an emphasis or. A feeling of consensus that we needed to do that through um any particular type of jobs. It was more on the particular types of businesses and services that we felt were appropriate to serve the community.
Oh, by the way, my my comment was more about the overall one and one point one, one point two, as opposed to defining the living wage and all that. I was just thinking about like overall, I I like, there's a bit of push here. I hope the living wage jobs definition was meant to be maybe somewhere else. If that were included, I didn't think we can put that here about rates and that that doesn't make sense for a fifteen year document to put in a.
If it ends, yeah.
Yeah, more, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, please.
Uh, now that you can say that, yeah, the living wage job definition, I just put it in there because oftentimes people ask, you know, what what is the definition of that living wage job? It's a pretty jargony term that is now being thrown around pretty regularly in in regional policy. Um, but yeah, it is, it is obviously a um, would would be, would not be relevant even a year from now, probably, so. Uh, just a glossary item there. Um, so I I think the one thing I heard there particularly leaning towards. Community feedback and sort of desires around economic development. It's more of a focus on those. Business and services that serve the community, and I think that's definitely a theme that then Mark conveyed. Um, of maybe more of the direction where this element should should lean into. Um. So just to maybe put a pin on these first two, the one point one and one point two, uh, unless others have have comments. We can remove, I think, the living wage job language, maybe some of the um, the jobs, housing balance language. But uh, to Yana's point, I think. First of all, you you currently have the zoning and land capacity to allow for job growth to meet your targets. I should have said that at the at the top, um, you know, from our land capacity analysis, you have more than enough capacity to meet your your five hundred and fifty. Jobs uh target over the next twenty years. Um, so I, you know, I don't think we're talking about expanding that. Most of that capacity does lie within the Southern Gateway and and then some in your town center. Um, just with the the existing zoning that's there, so I think that opportunity is there. Um, and there, the fact that it's that it's allowed, there there could be further growth in employment. The question then would become, does the city want to put time or resources or more emphasis on trying to. You know, to grow or attract further business uh in that regard, and I, at least from what I'm hearing. Not so much, more of a focus on locally serving businesses and and services. Does that sound right?
Yeah, there is no money for with, you know, for the kind of partnerships that other more affluent cities do.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, that would certainly summarize my summit there.
Yeah.
Ironically, um, downtown transit and King County Metro are reducing and eliminating transit. Right at one forty fifth and Bothaway, uh, one of our council members who lives in Southern Gateway. Has expressed his views but been consistently rejected. And so uh, it is an irony because there is that opportunity, right? But I guess you have to wait till it till it comes to push for the for the restoration of the bus stop and the service.
Alright. Okay.
Was anything said about one point three?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Was anything said about one point three?
Not that I.
Not at last, we we focused on the ones where they weren't added.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Good.
Um, alright, moving on to the next one about town center.
Yeah, so I was already talk about, you know, the sort of the thrust of the plan is is to maintain the town center. As I know, there's a lot of recent work that's been done around there, so we we did not adjust the the existing policies. As it relates to town center. That said, I know these were drafted prior to the adoption of the town center vision and the and the revised zoning, so. Um, sort of looking to you all and whether you feel there's a need to um revisit or revise any of these town center focused policies. And I think there were, there was some comments last week, if I remember specifically. Uh, relatively, like what sort of actions the city could take um to maybe take over more control um or authority. Uh, over the future of town center, is that correct?
Yeah, I think I I heard was Maddie had shared that she wanted some kind of provision added with a goal of wanting to purchase it, for the city to purchase the town center.
But those are reflected on the bottom of page eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
There's two of them. Um, the one the chair just mentioned was explore a policy that. Is worded about uh opportunities for the city to purchase all or part of town center. In general, without exact words, but that would. In general, without exact words, but that would fit in. Goal ED three as a potential new policy. The second one mirrored Commissioner Lee's comment. Um, back in the land use element about explore expansion of commercial zones along SR one oh four. And so those two are the comments from last Thursday night for this goal.
And I think the other overarching comment for all of ED three was. Commissioner Larson had expressed, and I think there was consensus that these policies. May feed into a misperception that the city really can control. Um, how the owner of. Town center chooses to develop it. And after going through the town center process three, a couple of years back. It's clear that isn't really the case. And so there was maybe a desire to. Either consolidate or caveat the existing policies in ED three. Uh, to maybe get that point across a little more subtly, like, you know, instead of. Having all of these support development, promote transit, or is developed prioritized public and non-motorized transportation. Maybe caveat it by saying, you know, have a. I think it was something to the effect of have policies and regulatory um approaches that. That promote or that encourage, you know, so caveat it a bit, but also truncating some of the policies, consolidating them where appropriate. I'm not sure who is best to take the first pass of that, though. I don't think we really landed that.
Uh, she did, but it came in somewhere. Just before six P M. So the with five attachments. None of them were easily openable. I hear my comments. And so it's impossible to go through those.
So maybe we can. Discussion till we can have a look at that.
Is anybody strongly opposed to that? I mean, hearing the meeting. Recapping that, thank you. I I totally agree with that. And also Commissioner Lee's about that comment about expanding for commercials on. Super important that. Any other thoughts or comments?
I mean, I I mean, I appreciated the. A comment that these the the words used, these very active form words is here, maybe suggests the city has more. More a stronger guiding hand than we actually do. So. I could, I could see that. I don't know that it's totally. Maybe we need to clean it all up or or whatever, but I I do. I might get it maybe wanting some of those, but just making it clear like we can. We try to set the. Conditions in place that may, you know, encourage that from a private landowner of the property to do. So I like the comment. I think she's right on. And I don't know if we should spend the time to clean this right now or or maybe think about it a little more how to do it.
Yeah, I probably can't discuss this anymore without seeing some actual language in there, but. As long as nobody is strongly opposed to it, then that's something we can go back. Iron out hopefully some of the comments she had. Usable for that.
And did somebody then have the action item to craft language on the two points that Mark summarized?
I thought that was Maddie.
Was that also Maddie? All right, so maybe we come back to this next time when we had a chance to listen to language. Does that work for you, David?
Yeah, okay. So so just to sum up, sounds like so Maddie's drafted some language that will get sent over and we'll incorporate it. Maybe we can also on on my side, take a pass at. From what I'm hearing, either consolidating or removing some of the active language in these policies, just to make it more focused on. What's within the city's purview currently, so more related to to development regulations um. And and just setting the 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 supporting um environment to encourage these sort of things rather than actively. Promoting or, you know, working to um. To to develop these, you know, trade the rates and development, et cetera. Um, I think. The well, I yeah, I'd be curious to see the language that that Maddie drops up around acquiring um the land. So that's that's certainly. Something that can be put in into policy language. As a as a long term sort of policy and then goal. So, yeah, we'll incorporate that and then take a a pass at making those revisions for um. Then I guess you'll you'll see them once those are are completed um for the the sort of final draft of the element.
I think the issue we kind of. Deal with a little bit is residents think of town center as a part of town or a neighborhood when it's a parcel.
Yeah.
The and 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 I don't mean that to be flip. I think that's really how people think about it. Like we can, you know, micromanage it like we maybe could in. Some neighborhood setting like we'll put a park here, we'll do this here. So I think it's partly getting at that. It's like all this town center discussion is about a parcel owned by a private company. So frame some of the language around that reality is.
And this conversation's been happening for twenty years.
All right, moving on uh. So now I'll take a peek at um the diversity in retail services and amenities. Uh, I heard on the discussion that there. Well, so the four point five and four point six are new. And there's discussion on four point six in particular to about specifically calling out women and minority owned businesses. And startup companies um. I I guess the question I would pose to consultants at SAM to also lean on you if you want to add more about the discussion that happened, but consultants, do you guys? Four point six in particular, I know that there's the diversity requirement. Um, and 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 the language, but is it necessary mandatory required that we put in local? Local women minority owned language phrases that are required? Or can we can we blanket that language which is saying? To advance economic opportunity for all.
Yeah, I think there, again, there there's more leeway in terms of how the city wants to locally. To address um the the challenges of sort of diversity in business. Um, this language, yeah, is coming. Pretty directly from regional policy where there's a a major focus on this and and economic development policy and across really all the elements. So. If there's a desire from commission to to make it a more general focus on on business opportunities for for all. Um, you may get some some pushback from the regional level, but there's no, at least from my knowledge and Christina. Or Mark, tell me if I'm wrong, but my my knowledge is there's not a state mandate that would be um. Sort of dinging you for um for removing that language.
But there's not, um, we're we'll get credit for already having an economic development element for keeping it. Um, and the process is is processed, having that discussion. But it's not intended to change the character of the local jurisdiction. If this were land use or housing, I would feel more strongly to stick with the regional language. But this is economic development. This is more closely aligned with the character of the existing city. So while the language is captured from vision two fifty and the safest way for certification is to match it. I think in this category, the local language and that we had the conversation is part of the important parts that I would argue at that point.
And I guess the last thing I would say is, you know, I think to that point. Having this conversation, it's, you know, this this language is again almost taken sort of verbatim from from vision twenty fifty. But if if there is a more locally sort of relevant way to frame this, or are there specific? Communities, minority groups that you would want to partner with or actively engage with around business ownership um or recruitment. This is an opportunity maybe to put that into policy. So if there's. Any any thoughts on that? We can make this more locally focused.
Yeah, one comment that I do have in regards to, so. We've just recently seen the first time one billion dollars spent donated to women's issues. Right, well, Lender Gates is just like first time ever that that kind of money is paid fairly towards. You know, women's issues. And we don't know what that's going to look like. We don't know what kind of doors that's going to open for other investment um. And I'm just, I'm concerned about taking. That the 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 female. There there's research showing that that women do better at running businesses that um. You know, there's all kinds of advantages of of keeping a language that, you know, maybe we. Uh, you know, what I'm trying to say is I'm hesitant about taking. Female owned business out of this language.
That that does bring up um a possible benefit of leaving it in. I've been looking at it from a certification mandate, right? Um, one category that we haven't really talked about is without making this policy document too expansive. There there is much benefit to include language like this in there for possible grants. Granted, start at the policy level, the existing word in in the um document are pulled out to support the narrative for the grant application. That could be one of the benefits.
But we did hear from Deputy Mayor Bodie last week about the challenge of. Uh, doing the budget and how oftentimes creative uh. Grants that we get are what help us fill budget gaps into that and maybe it makes sense to keep the policy.
And I say, um, we don't recruit businesses as a city. So the word recruitment. Strikes me as. Again, it's back to that we don't have resources for that kind of thing. So I just flag that one regardless of how you. Uh, structure it for diversity. Uh, I think the recruitment word is oversold. Yeah.
But we can create an environment that's open to.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just flagging that one word. Yeah.
Yes, but maybe instead of focusing recruitment efforts by focusing uh policies and efforts. To advance the so it avoids the recruitment issue. But it still keeps this as a policy goal that still enables, you know, the reliance on this applied for transit available.
Or you could strike, you could strike the phrase by focusing recruitment efforts. And then it would read promote diversity in business to advance economic opportunity, et cetera.
That's good too.
Yeah, I was gonna gonna say with if that's the the trouble word, I think that that could be removed and would still maintain the the intent of the policy. Um, there could also to the point of, you know, the city doesn't have the resources to focus on business recruitment. Um, there are there are partnerships available. And also I know it takes resources and time to sort of establish those partnerships, but especially. Related to this cause of advancing opportunity for for women and and minority owned businesses. There are a lot of. Um, of regional partners, financial institutions that focus specifically on supporting these types of businesses. So if that's sort of. An opportunity in the future to pursue, especially if looking for more locally serving businesses that are going to be small, locally owned. Again, just have that that supportive policy language to maybe um. To carry out some of those actions in the future.
I would just say that I, you know, I mean, I generally support, um, you know, having. Strong language around diversity and and underserved communities throughout the comp plan. So I have no. I I would prefer to leave this in, and I do think there is a, you know. There is a potential perception issue, you know, we sort of decide not to include language. Like that, that maybe the region has recommended. Whether it's for part organizations who are looking to, you know. Choose who to work with, us or Kenmore or whatever, whatever the story is. But. I prefer to leave it unless it's a really good reason to get it out. The flip side of me says, I just want any kind of business development. I don't care. Anything, but but I from at at the higher level, I would rather leave that language in. Getting rid of focusing recruitment, yes, but I don't wanna, I I'm not really into getting rid of the last part.
I think, um, you know, since the recording and and just to put it out there, I am. I feel that I just I don't like putting that silo and and. And specifically calling out women and minority, I feel like it should be open to all of or of let's get some business in here. And if it's. If it's a white male, it's a white male. Right. I just, so having that specific focus on a language makes me uncomfortable. I understand though that the consensus of the group and based on last call, I think that everybody prefers to keep that in there. Um, with the exception of of Meredith. So unless there's any other thoughts or.
What if we put that question out to the community here?
I agree, actually. I think that we should put it out to the community because, you know, I look at this and I say, well, are we just putting this in there because it looks good? And because, you know, the. State is trying to move in this direction um without, I I think that a lot of people might look at it that way. They might look at it like, oh, we're just trying to look good. And that's why we're just shoving this thing in there when we don't already, I mean, we have, we have. Open spots in the town center right now that are just sitting vacant. And so. But it like any business in there whatsoever would be great. Um, but I think asking community members maybe. Like, what do they think about that? I'd like to know.
I guess one, oh, sorry.
No, go go for it.
I just, um, one, one thing that I want to add, you know, when we, when we're talking about. Minorities, you know, we're often talking about racial minorities, true, but I think this. This could potentially be read a little more broadly to other groups that don't have as many resources to start businesses. Uh, people that are very young, for example, um, or people that lack. Some economic means and you're opening the door for them to by including this kind of language. Um, I think that there's a lot of value for people in seeing themselves represented in policies like this that say. You know, it it gives them the sense that there is support for them to work through the struggles to take that leap. So I I personally am. Throwing my weight in on keeping it uh as a as a recommendation.
I guess I'm also thinking about what um. Laurie was saying about how little control we have over what the owners do with the town center. Like we just have no control over it. I mean, Laurie, you were sharing. Last week about how they were handing people basically their pink slips and there wasn't really any, you know. We we were not quite sure why. There was no explanation behind why they were going to invite these businesses to leave, some of them that have been there for a very long time. Um, you know, so I guess that's that's another thing. I look at this.
You know, this is a common thread though, this group we've discussed around the comp plan, just in general, is are we? Are we talking about diversity? Are we talking about splitting out women versus men? And so I think to your point, David, it's it's important to bring it up because it's throughout the comp plan. And if we can get any kind of feedback from the community on that. Because again, we don't have a hundred percent agreement as a commission. So that obviously leads to believe that's not how our community feels, you know, one hundred percent one way. So I think that'd be valuable to bring up.
And are there any other questions like that that could be added to that?
So maybe we keep it. Removing the recruitment, we make it as part of the town hall, something we try to get input on. And we go for that.
And then the council will do with it what they want.
I I do want to raise one last thing, sort of to build off Christina's point. I I think. The intention of this policy and certainly from the the regional policy is really around locally owned small businesses. Because you see the the word locally, which is in the way it's written, separate from women and minority owned. There's also an emphasis on women and minority minority owned businesses for the reasons Christina said, right, historically disadvantaged communities that haven't had access to capital and. And and the ability to start businesses. Um, but. I I do think the emphasis on locally owned and serving businesses. Seems to be consistent with a lot of what I've heard from you all and and from some of the community feedback as well. So I think. It interpreted in that way, there is a broader sort of intent in the policy.
Can we add the word own then? Opportunity for locally owned.
Yeah, it has look, yeah, it has locally.
Because locally can be Washington.
Maybe it just needs a hyphen.
Yeah, I was gonna say we add a hyphen there so it's included in the owned.
I mean, it also kind of, for me, truthfully, being a female, I'm a minority and we own our own. Small business in the city, because kind of just feels like. Let's just check the box and see what we can get. Like, it doesn't feel like it does anything for me, truthfully, and and it feels like it's limiting. Rather than opening it up to anyone, which is. At this stance I have, but again, I I hear everybody here and want to go with that. At this stance I have, but again, I I hear everybody here and want to go with the consensus, but I think if we can open it to discussion for more than just the room, that would be great. And if it comes back, I guess.
Okay. Um, well, I think, yeah, we'll we'll remove some of the wording there. There'll be further discussion on this in the open house, it sounds like. I guess the one thing I wanted to maybe jump back to then was policy four point four. Um, which is more specifically focused on homegrown economic development opportunities um. And neighborhood serving shops and restaurants. Uh, so this is, this is more. General, but also sort of specifically adding some of that language for locally serving business. Um, so this was pulled in from the Southern Gateway Plan, just in other discussions that have have been brought up in these meetings. Um, so I'm not hearing any objections to that, but uh, that is was one of the additions. I know there was a note on it. Was there any further thoughts on that? Does that sort of cover our bases in that regard? Or is there? Maybe this is where that language of expanding commercial zoning potentially would also live or be supporting. Um, of this direction.
Or do you remember what the, did you have in in the notes that you shared what the comment was from our last meeting? I'm not remembering.
Not not four point four, you know, it's reflective of our overall direction discussion. The comment was more towards four point one and making it broader enough, where it just called out retail. And types of taxes being known versus fifth tax and just a discussion about whether retail or neighborhood serving or. Subregional or professional services, what words we would use in four point one, but I think. Four point four is consistent with our overall discussion.
Yeah, there was comment at the meeting about do we want four point one to be broader than just retail? I don't know if there was kind of unanimity of opinion on that. Uh, but I think one of the points that was made was that might be more than just retail. But one of the themes from the community survey was that. Uh, people really felt that there was more of an opportunity for kind of. Local serving business, businesses in the community. Uh, that was one of the things that kind of came through in the themes of feedback. So maybe we align the language in four point one and four point four, so recognize and promote. Uh, local business strength as an important source of revenue and economic engine for the city. Instead of just retail strength, and then four point four builds on that by talking about neighborhood serving shops and restaurants. Or neighborhood serving businesses.
Yeah, it's great. Thank you.
I'm just taking some notes over here. Yeah, if we want to move on.
Yeah, please. Four point six. And it's kind of. Do you want to go to eighty six?
Yeah, maybe that's.
So, uh, retaining, investing and cultivating new business to enhance the quality of life.
I think there was just a general question of what we were trying to achieve with six, the second six point four, so what should be six point five? I think the explanation of the discussion guide and the language here, uh. Last week, we were just wondering whether we needed that or whether there was an improvement to the language that would better capture. The intent in the, in the discussion guide.
I think this is another instance similar to four point six where. Um, this is the regional direction in policy to to focus. On economic assets and economic opportunity um, for. Right ethnically diverse communities, but particularly native tribes, um. Knowing there's been some discussion of this particular topic within the commission. Are there any thoughts on uh, ways this can be more locally focused on? On community groups within Lake Forest Park, um, does not need to to be written as, as it is. Um, or or it can be, could be removed, uh, depending on on your direction.
Was the the flavor Sam more of, this doesn't really. We're okay removing it if there wasn't a new reason brought to it.
If I'm remembering correctly, but Cherie and Melissa, keep me honest and Mark, if you're. Deputy Mayor Bodie, if you're mistaken, if you remember differently, I think the sentence was we would check and see what the intent was. And if there was some important reason we needed to include it, and if not, if there wasn't a way to kind of better capture an intent, we would consider removing it.
It's deletion, but uh, the consensus was the language for parks and open space related. As opposed to economic development. And my conversation with the consultant was, this is perfect. Language taken from the region that would work well in Snowfall, heavy tribe presence. But not necessarily in Lake Forest Park. So there's nothing wrong with it, but it might be in that category, doesn't really apply to this small city.
Right, that's what I was wondering now, was there also, would we kind of put it in the parking lot, remove it here and think when we look back at the. Kind of parks, um, section, is there, you know, a place there that this could be captured if it wasn't right captured?
To that point that you just made, Mark, or yeah, I know we discussed this, that this could be more relevant in parks. If, if I interpret that to mean that your parks and some of your open spaces are your culturally relevant act assets. Um, those can also be valid economic development assets, right? And so tying them together within these two elements. And if there are specific assets that. Would be worthwhile calling out in this policy, it can be. Rewritten to be more focused on that. So if we want to say your cultural assets within certain parks, um, or if you have any. Any cultural or arts organizations that exist within the city that could also be referenced here. Um, this, that could be a worthwhile inclusion uh, in this, in this policy.
So we do have Shore Lake Arts, uh, which we're trying to get more involved in. Uh, Lake Forest Park, though, they're closing their store in the in the mall. So, uh, they're going to be more physically based in shoreline, unfortunately, but. They are, uh, the Parks Board especially is trying to get them. To have more diversity of events here. And there, there are some of the things that they're sponsoring are going to be in Lake Forest Park. Uh, this year that previously were in shoreline. So it is our, it is our local arts organization, I guess, is all I. Say in in answer to David's comment.
Well, I guess, I mean, we're in the, we're in the new businesses, we're in the businesses goal area. And I'm, what I struggle to figure out is what, like, and maybe this is for Mark and for. Uh, Deputy Mayor Bodie, what, what are public investment decisions that we make in that space?
For Lake Forest Park, I'm unaware of any, but for different jurisdiction, I'm aware of many.
Right. So, I mean, but we do invest in parks, so I totally agree with that piece. I'm having, I'm struggling how, what, I'm trying to imagine what those things look like. Where this would ever help. Yeah, you, the council members. Or or planning director to apply this. So I, I mean, I was actually kind of. Leading towards striking it because I really found it confusing to apply it to this place. I could apply it to other places pretty easily.
You could charge admission to the park.
I like the spirit of it. I I appreciate the spirit of it. And I don't see how it fits.
I think that was kind of. Yeah, so it would strike that, and it didn't really fit here.
So maybe we should do that and then just think if, if there's a way, if it's not already reflected in the kind of park section, we think about it there.
Sounds good. Is everyone comfortable with that? Alrighty.
I'm just not, great. I don't think there were any major concerns with six two and six four, but I could be forgetting.
Well, I am curious, six four, six point four, promote environmental, associating responsible business practices. What's an example?
Uh, compostable, uh, no non-compostable. Uh, products for take, for takeaway. We have policies like that, no plastic bags. You know, without a deposit, but we're caught in state law on that.
And the climate action plan is very heavy on implementation, whereas this is a policy document, this. Generality would support many of the items in it.
Stormwater management, I think, is a new and upcoming area where we're gonna have mandates that are on us. Put mandates on businesses and private properties, uh, for stormwater. So. I guess those would be the examples I think of off the top of my head, um, building code.
People as socially responsible, environmental business practices. Place, you know, if you're building a new business in the corridor, you know, place for EV charging, place to park your bikes, you know. Safe pedestrian access, things like that.
There's, uh. A lot of times people, uh, I I think sometimes I'm mistaken when we come together environmental and social responsibility practices. Environmental practices can be very different from social responsible practices. When we talk about social responsibility, we're talking about. How people are treated within a company, how people are, you know, are are we going that far? Here in Lake Forest Park, same, you know, if if a company exists here in Lake Forest Park, there has to be a certain number of. Commendations towards, I don't know, again, to give an example, but. Is it, is it okay to lump this together like this, or do we want to separate out environment, you know, responsible? Business activities from socially responsible. Or does it even matter?
I appreciate your point.
I didn't pick up on that at all, so.
Well, I think it's because it's become a term of art to put them together is what's happening, I think. Sorry, I didn't.
Um, I mean, so English is my second language, so I, I didn't, I mean, I just, I just. It made sense to me, just reading it the way it was.
Yeah, all I'm saying is that there's a distinction between environmental, business practice, sustainable business practices, and socially responsible practices. But.
But I think if you break them out, you would have to explain, I mean, you would have to go into more detail. For someone who doesn't understand English that. What, what, you know, because I would think, what does that mean?
One can make that same point for a lot of languages.
It's true. Yeah, it's very true.
I just think that socially responsible, environmental, social, environmental business practices are very, uh. It's key to, in a resonance, it's key to. Uh, addressing climate change, it's key to addressing rights, it's key to, you know, what kinds of.
Can I try something on? Cause I, I mean, these are both, I mean, both are important, but they're different, right? And what we're trying to frame here is what kind of business environment do we want to encourage? So what if we said. This is an easy fix, promote both environmentally and socially responsible.
Sounds good, yeah.
I mean, then it's, yes, it's, this is like.
Yeah, yeah, it makes sense.
Both environmentally and socially responsible business practices.
But I like that.
Alright, thank you.
That added, added a word.
Alright, I think that does it for that section. We want to jump to thirty eight, the the document.
Sorry, jump to.
Oh, I think, um.
The parks, right?
Yeah, so do you have any last comments on economic development things, David?
I don't think so. I think that's, that's clear direction, just in terms of some of those policy changes, um. Is Mark, we'll wait, we'll all wait to hear from you in terms of just some of the feedback on town center that we're waiting from, from Maddie. And then we'll, we'll get revisions over to you.
She emailed that to Christina and I, but no time to really open it. So we'll share with you and see where in those attachments her comment lies. It's likely to lie in their number two, three, four, five. So wherever this document is in the sequence, maybe two or three. Two, um, I think that was her intent. So the comment should lie in that goal, in that policy. Uh, that we just talked about.
Okay.
Show up there, but we'll first share with you, say, yeah, and then we'll find it.
Yeah, I just, I just forwarded it along. Um, I only included the economic development attachments, but you should have those.
Thank you.
Mark, did you mention earlier from the, again, I made a codic fully the recording, but did we. Find a home for what Lois was bringing up about SR one oh four? Yes, or do, did we, okay, okay.
It was awkward because it came up in my notes in the discussion while we were on a later goal, but it related back to goal three.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, David.
Yeah, thank you all. Um. I think I will, I will leave you to parks and, um, yeah, get over these revisions, uh, for you, um. In short order. Thanks all, have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, uh, back to me. Uh, with parks, parks, trails and open spaces. Everybody flip to the correct page. In your packet. Okay, great. Um, alright, so I'm sure, similar to to economic development. The parks element is optional because funding has not been allocated to prepare an element that fully complies with the GMA. Um, I did note that the current element is not consistent. Um, if we're attempting to meet GMA, then these four things would need to migrate. Uh, from where they currently are into the parks, trails and open space element. So that includes estimates of demand in a ten year period. An evaluation of facilities and service needs, documentation of tree canopy coverage and opportunities for intergovernmental coordination. Uh, for regional projects. So the current element doesn't have these things. It doesn't have to have them for this update. This information exists elsewhere. So some of this uh, has been mentioned in background analyses elsewhere. Uh, it's also all in your post plan. Um, so that plan would kind of as a standalone item. Meet all of these requirements. Uh, so it's not like the information. Needs to be developed. It would just need to be brought into this element, which could be done at a future date.
Um, but we have a brand new tree canopy coverage. Uh, as well as some projection of how it's changed over time, um, that's been developed as well as a. A kind of USDA I Tree Study that has given the ecological services benefits. And a financial number to those ecological services provided by the existing tree canopy. Uh, which is something I think the climate change group is also aware of, because that's. An aspect of our climate change plan is keeping trees, so we keep the climate benefits. Uh, as someone in the Climate Action Committee said to me, we're helping out all these other cities. That are, uh, building like crazy by keeping our tree canopy, because, uh, otherwise they're actually. Free, they're, they're solving one problem and creating another, you know, so. Anyway, but we do have good information on, on that. Um, I just want to mention also, we are talking to. Um, with neighboring cities about, uh, intergovernmental collaboration on an aquatic center.
Ooh, that's a really cool project.
It's on the down, it's on the down low, because it's. It's, it's years before it would advance, but, uh, yeah, and and our engagement depends on where the location would be. Which is some of the conversation, but there, there are those, uh, intergovernmental. I, to me, that's the biggest example of recreational. recreational intergovernmental cooperation that's going on right now. So just to throw those three things out for you to uh be aware of.
That's great, yeah, um. It might, it, uh so we, I did get a copy of the updated tree canopy information, which also included the I Tree Study, and I think I think that the tree canopy increased from the last study, and it's at just over fifty percent now, which is fabulous. Um, so that it, that all of this information does exist somewhere. Um, and there is, yes, very recent information related to to the tree canopy coverage. It's really cool to hear that you're you're talking with your neighbors um to to provide some more um much desired amenities for the community. Um, okay. Uh with the King County countywide planning policies, the current element is largely consistent. There are a lot of goals that support providing more open space and recreational opportunities. The the requirements uh that we would be hoping to address in this update are how to address prioritization, especially for neighborhoods that have a history of disinvestment or you know, some some kind of lack of investment for whatever reason in green infrastructure. Um, and then uh you do already have goals supporting the provision of parks, trails and open space resources within walking distance of urban residents, but looking at prioritizing investments again in historically underserved communities. Um, so it's it's um closing that gap uh in, as we are thinking through prioritization uh for acquisitions and development projects. Um, we talked a little bit about this last time, uh water reuse and reclamation is something that has appeared uh as kind of a encouragement uh in King County countywide planning policies. We did already add this to the environmental quality element. Uh so we would add kind of a a peer policy here. Um, and then uh the other note that I have for consideration is how do we want to address historic disparities? Um, you know, given, given resources available and all of our desires to have um, you know, pretty, pretty even and accessible network across the city. Similar to the King County CPPs, um the the current element is generally consistent with PSRC's Vision twenty fifty. We're already looking for opportunities to develop new parks and civic places and public spaces. Um, in including at Town Center uh in the regulations that were adopted. Um, there's a a similar goal uh or policy asking us to provide parks, trails and open spaces within walking distance of urban residents and prioritize investments uh in historically underserved communities. So having this conversation will uh kind of address both of those pieces for the CPPs and for Vision twenty fifty. Um, so with that, I would love to turn our attention to the discussion guide. I also want to be mindful of the time. It is eight thirty four. Um, I know you guys typically need a little bit of time to wrap things up, uh so I I just want to be mindful um of the the time that we have. Um, Mark shared his notes uh from the the last discussion, but if there's anything that you all want to dive a little deeper into or expand on uh from your previous conversation, um now's the time.
I think if I'm remembering from last week, there there was some conversation about a few of the elements. Um, I think there were a number that were flagged as implementation actions, and by and large, the consensus was that those were all correct, and so if those were to be moved to implementation action section or a company document that made sense to the group. But I wonder, based on the comments that Mark shared, we might just focus on on those. Unless there's, and then if we miss anything that anybody else feels of the fourth, we can come back to it.
Good.
The uh first one was goal PT dash one. My note was update the first plan or incorporate it in their self company.
Right, and that was to the point uh Christina, that you were just making, which is we have, and that Deputy Mayor Bodie made, we have some of this in in other documents, so it was just to make a reference to it so that we could uh have that kind of sign notes.
And and it is, uh it is our plan, it is our plan to develop and update a first plant, because it's somewhat outdated as well.
Okay.
Did I hear, did the Parks Board, they reviewed this and they were gonna have comments?
That's true.
Right next.
Yeah, there were two, two parts of Thursday's meeting that were essentially updates without language. Tree Board spent three meetings looking at the existing tree policies. No major change, but some uh easy comments to incorporate into the formatted draft were added towards.
Okay.
But consistent with Funding Commission's discussion and support for it's in there. Uh, two weeks ago, as that Parks and Recreation Board gave them the same opportunity, and the fourth week of June all have their feedback, but it it should be similar.
Sorry.
No outright policy change direction indicated, but give us the must to kind of consider it, and they have the existing volume one and volume two given to them.
Great. Okay, so one point one, um. Be good on one point one, Christina, with Sam's comments?
Yes, I think so. Thank you.
Awesome.
Uh next one, uh the 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 I just have mid, uh no mitigating the five twenty two, you know, under PT two. So I guessing that's sound transit BRT. Lakefront Park, Town Center connectivity. Uh, not just pathways, but safety. Safety improvements. Something along those lines.
And you want that in PT two specific to like the the Burke Gilman Trail, or is that something that you'd like to see more in um? Let's see, maybe PT three, which addresses safety?
I think it entered my brain on this page, but then really became a discussion on page forty three, which is goal PT three. I wrote it in bigger letters, so I think.
You really meant it.
Mark, I remember the same connection with uh PT three point two. So the co- the comment was from Commissioner Lee, and it was to reflect that. Um, in connection with that policy, we might also want to broaden it uh to reflect in light of the five twenty two kind of changes uh at the upcoming waterfront park. To get sure that that policy to reflect, you know, having accessible and safe routes to that park that these three is of all residents.
Okay.
Searching.
Yeah, I don't think there was much else on one or two.
Yeah, that's, yeah. I think all groups started to gain steam on three. And I have one more note on three. At uh reference to safe streets.
Oh, yes, the same thing as the first plan, we have the safe streets.
Inclusion, similar to transportation to home at reference.
And what I think the top priority in safe streets, which uh relates to the earlier comment, is safe routes to schools. So.
It was lower down this way.
Okay.
Mark, was there anything else that we're, are we on the? Now we're on the four. Four point five. My notes were uh. Yeah, what was I thinking?
I think the.
Oh, check with Tree Board Language Amendment or some sort of simple with.
Okay, there was some, there was some discussion there about recognizing art organizations that do some of that. That's what I heard in the recording.
That's right. You like figure that stuff like.
Yeah, I mean, it's, so I think maybe it's removed and, you know, kind of like, and and encourage partner organizations to promote that action as well. I don't, I I'm not going to wordsmith it right now, but that's what I heard in the discussion was, hey, this kind of says, hey, remove this stuff, but rather, maybe it's you know, prioritize invasive species controls and parks, trails and open spaces in collaboration with community groups. I don't.
Yeah, no, that jogs my memory. And it mirrors a comment of the Tree Board that you'll see.
Okay.
I just didn't have the exact language.
I know that when I was a member of the Tree Board, we discussed uh one of the largest commitments to the health of the canopy is IP.
Yeah.
Uh, and so I'm wondering if we want to actually you know, I guess we remove its species, but actually to recognize some uh to actually identify some of these.
There's, there are four, and they had a three touch discussion uh that was just invasive species, go with that, because there's many of them. No, let's call them out, and there the what you'll see is their language where they called them out, but gave them their correct names.
They already called out its policy level or that, or is it implementation action?
Oh, C level, okay, yeah. Uh, and so they've, they've done their, they've blessed it. And my task now is to get it to you by making sure that the strikeout underlying of what they've uh recommended is placed over existing language in the comprehensive plan, but there's when you see it, there's no mystery, there's no big shift.
I got you, yeah.
So I'll get that to you, keep looking at it day to day.
Okay, so what I heard is that this um PT four point five should be rephrased as a policy, and then we can also potentially add some implementation language for that.
Yeah, and I'll share the Tree Board three pages or so with you, but I distributed it.
Okay.
It'll make sense when you, when you read it.
That sounds great. Um, I would also like to, I know we we haven't gotten to four point six yet, but I would like to rephrase that um as a policy as well. Right now, it's written as an implementation action, but I might just copy what we included for environmental quality uh that talks about encourage where feasible.
Do we, do we get? Do we have Purple Pipe near us from Bright Waters or Reclaim Water Pipe, or is this a kind of a?
It's wish for, it's more recent until you haven't had large scale redevelopment or subdivisions or large commercial centers, so most everything. So maybe the multi project is probably the most.
Okay, so we'd be encouraging that with either large scale developments or if King County decides to drag Purple Pipe to us, that we could then tap for our A M S Boulder issues.
Yeah. Could you touch on that policy sort of when the occasion arises?
Active Parks, we have about fifteen minutes here.
Uh, active parks five, I have a note on five point two. Amend broader stakeholders update.
Yeah, I think the comment was, we didn't want to call out or just solely focus on youth council, but uh maybe brought it to say engage with uh community groups. Uh, and then there was some debate on, do we mention youth council as a part or not? We didn't even know if we had a youth council, so maybe we just leave it as engage uh community groups and stakeholders in planning for active parks.
Can we have a use machine, because they could stay up later? Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Dick? My shit says.
Six. Signage, uh no.
We don't want to, we don't want to talk about.
Signage in general is at the City Council from the planning commission's work. But as it relates to parks and and trails, King County standardization really is the policy. Safety.
And is everyone familiar with universal design as a, as a term to describe this?
We're, we'd need a refresher.
No.
Okay, uh it it's essentially using um a a variety of techniques to make sure that signage is legible to people with varying abilities. Um, so it's, it's an accessibility descriptor. Um, it just, it kind of broadens it to to more fully address kind of the range um of abilities for for people um with visual uh or hearing impairments, that kind of thing. Um. But I will, I'm gonna make a note to add that to the glossary.
Thank you.
Okay, three more areas, PT seven.
So I think where we left PT seven, um, there was a desire last week to revert the goal language to continue to develop and expand public access to art and cultural heritage for public places. And then to add a policy goal that essentially captured what the edit was trying to do at the heading level. Uh, that would say encourage inclusive, uh have policies that encourage inclusive representation in art and cultural heritage for public places.
Okay.
Sid.
I gotta, I gotta capture that, otherwise I know twenty minutes, I'm not gonna remember now.
Very good. So part eight would be building community. Just four points in there.
Can I say, I don't know that we have a public parks plan, do we, Mark? Not, it has never come up in my time on council.
It's with the youth council.
I haven't run into those words.
Okay, okay, thank you. Just flagging something that perhaps was aspirational.
Where do you see that?
It's in uh seven point four.
As we go forward into December or beyond, um that's might be an example of verifying whether it's personally still.
Right, right.
Anything with the building? Community, twenty eight?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Hey, I'm just a little confused just by the kind of goals written. I'm looking at the strike through, like, what is that supposed to say? There are so many edits, I'm confused what the goal eight says.
It says facilitate inclusive involvement in community activities in the revision.
Building.
So the goal is just the community.
So that's the green part of the action is facilitating.
Okay, okay, I got it. I was just, there was just too many.
Got it, capital R two.
I know, Word, Word did a number on the uh auto-generated colors for this one, didn't it?
All right, legacy?
Uh, legacy PT dash nine. I have a uh SEJ to discuss. Even distribution.
I think, was this for nine point one? I'm vaguely recalling that there was a question of why did it have to be focused on, especially in or adjacent to centers?
Oh, yes.
To be more evenly distributed throughout the city.
Yeah.
The um, uh, it was, I believe, um, go back, uh. Here in PSRC Vision twenty fifty, so that term relates back to PSRC's kind of regional framework. Uh, I think we can broaden that.
Okay, so maybe we could just revert back to as priorities instead of especially in or adjacent to centers in nine point one?
Yeah, I think we can.
Okay, yeah, I actually, okay, good. Staring right at it.
Was there anything else at nine that you could call Mark that we talked about?
I uh I have at the tail end of nine. On uh new nine point five, new nine point six, well, new number, nine point five and six. I have some scratches there, and it's a question mark.
Yeah, nine point five, or the one that's that I heard the comment, and I kind of agreed, agree with it, was the weird ending where it says to develop creekside.
Oh, right, right.
Utilize conservation easements, and this is something, something with you. Or other means to expand wildlife corridors, daylight creeks into, and I suppose that to me, I'm hoping that means to like restore and protect riparian areas, is that what we?
But to develop. But that's not what the words are saying.
That sounds like a Kentucky term.
I said, the, the council has looked, has been discussing whether we should educate our community about the potential use of conservation easements, especially for people who might have uh sensitive areas on their property or large lots where they want to preserve a portion that may be, would it? Uh, so uh my only, my only thought on this is conservation easements have other uses than just these three that are mentioned here. these three that are mentioned here that the council has been loosely discussing that I just shared.
I'm also, I mean, you have some pretty robust critical areas regulations that wouldn't. I mean, it already prevents so much development in the riparian buffer of the creeks. So unless you were looking to expand that further, I'm not sure that tool would be all that useful.
The pushback there is that easements can be written to be permanent, whereas regulations can change.
True, although ecology is only getting more conservative and not less. But it's 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 a fair point. I just.
To to your point, it may actually read that way, what I thought wasn't the intent to develop creekside properties. Right, that was the. Reading the critical areas and approaching from that, I thought it was misworded because that's not regulations.
I do think it's misworded. I think that there's something missing here from the original. Like looking at the rest of the policy, it seems like we are looking at protecting, enhancing, expanding. So this idea of developing creekside, I think that likely must mean like developing like open space resources somehow or.
That's what I thought, but then if this was written ten, twenty years ago in policy and never thought about in regard to the development regulations for critical areas. The, it's so restrictive now. It's reasonable use exception. And so this language is not dated if that was the intent. Thirty years ago was to assist you developing your creekside property sensitively with the critical area. Now the regulations and what we see proposed is essentially reasonable use exception.
What if it were worded as utilize conservation easements or other means to to expand protections of open space resources such as wildlife corridors and creeks?
That, that, yeah, that seems to exactly support what's already written in our critical areas ordinance.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay, nice.
Okay, last five minutes, we have just ten, which is equity.
Same same discussion we have whenever this.
I was wondering, why is that? Why is the word historically? Maybe that's one of the five discussion, nevermind. Is there any other items with that?
I know we talked about this. Were we going to have, did we have a language proposal that I'm not remembering from last week on this? I think we maybe talked.
I didn't write it. I wrote even distribution cleanup. So it's in line with.
Okay, even distribution.
But I don't have the language yet for this policy.
Oh, I think maybe it was in ten point two, I'm recalling, it was planned for a system of parks, trails and gathering spaces that are accessible within a five mile.
Not five minute.
Five, five minute walk of all of the city's residents.
Well, and I think there was a question for Christina to get up in that recording to just make sure we understand walk shed because it's not, it's not just distance, aerial distance. It's walking distance, but does it also have like actual walking distance? But Christina doesn't also have like kind of a safety element, like, you know, if you're willing to jaywalk across five twenty-two, you know, lots of things.
Yeah, we would, we would be looking at barriers like that. So for local access roads, we would consider that people can just walk across those and those wouldn't be considered a barrier. Obviously gaps in the network would be, you know, we're moving beyond drawing a circle around our parks these days. But for like for five twenty-two or one oh four, those would be barriers and we would consider connectivity across them only at protected crossings to to get the the true walk shed.
And the other comment I picked up in the recording in the first part, ten point one was whether, and maybe there was a question here again for the consultants, prioritize underserved neighborhoods is what I heard. Someone suggested that don't we, don't we want all, yeah, instead of community, don't we want all of our neighborhoods that don't have good assets in this category, so.
Yeah, I I mean, I think kind of by default, those would be historically underserved because they don't have that infrastructure. So I think, you know, either way we phrase it, we would get to the same outcome.
Yeah, I do recall we spent a lot of time kind of chatting on these two. And so I think the consensus was changing communities to neighborhoods in ten point one. And then changing of the cities diverse residents to of all of the city's residents or of all of the city's neighborhoods in ten point two.
Okay, all right, got it. With three minutes to spare.
Three minutes to spare. Any other comments for Christina? Go to the order. Cool. Thanks Christina. We know you have a a big to do list for the next couple of weeks. So appreciate, appreciate it.
My graphics team is going to have a heart attack tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good night. Thank you.
All right. Any new business? We don't really have time. Reports and announcements. No citizen comments, agenda for next meeting. Can we talk about the call plan?
The one I know, I talked with Christina, our our periodic update grant deliverables are due in commerce this Friday. So they will exist, they'll be the most current and we'll start introducing the actual formatting. But it's too soon to reveal that formatting because more work needs to be done in preparation for the open house. For about a week or two early. And that regular meeting will predate the open house signing, it's open house prep and that formatting and that document that you're going to portray to the community of sixteen. But the good news, you are through all the elements. The input has been captured, we're downloading special meetings so far. But you want more?
And great thanks from the and the other council members for the hard work and the extra meetings. It's been a lot and a lot of, you know, thoughtful works, I think, of really getting down to that level. So it's greatly appreciated.
So open house will be on the agenda.
Open house will be on the agenda. And maybe we can get a preview of all the materials.
Yes.
That would be great.
Okay.
So between now and then, our charge is to spread the word once we get the the pieces.
I'm hesitant to say the sixteenth is in head. But I think that's our first goal is to get there so that we have a date, time and location. And then everything kind of flows from there. So I'll focus on that. I will do that by, you know, and you'll be able to confirm that by. My first task is to call Silvia.
Celia.
Celia.
Celia, yeah, it takes a while. It took me like a year.
Yeah.
To be able to say her name. S I L G H E.
And she, and she hasn't corrected me, so that's the most. But since it's not City Hall, it's out of our control. And then as soon as we know that, then that would be the back. And I know that next Tuesday night, we need to start with, you know, the internal coordination of what we said.
Thanks, Cecilia. Celia.
Now, being so new, my biggest fear is that I don't know the venue that well. And what other events or what section or policy or how do you reserve it? So that's my only apprehension. I don't see any conflict with city efforts on the sixteenth. So I'm going to look at their calendar right now and see.
Yeah, great. And do you have some thoughts on where is that?
Oh, so I think that usually when they have events, it's close into the stage. And so I don't think for an open house, you would necessarily be using the stage because you don't want people climbing up their little rickety stairs. But I think that area, right, you know, so if you think about the breakfast.
Yeah.
It's that area there and I think they have, I think they actually own those tables. Friends and friend place comes, the close in tables and have access to others. So the only thing they probably ask is for setup and 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 that cleanup of put everything back the way it is because, you know, it's kind of a volunteer organization for those kind of things. So, but do they have an event?
But we'll, we'll start with that. We showed that, build individual items regarding that, but they're not.
Other comments and if not, who wants to?
Celia may also have some ideas because as Executive Director of NUSA, she has hosted various open houses. So so she may have some thoughts on the arrangement. That will be very helpful.
You could tell her, there'll either be one person or like two hundred.
A wide range.
The style we can give it. I consider the prior events what we've had.
Were they?
Really?
It'd be a good sign. I mean, earlier is better, right? So it'd be a blessing for it to be well attended.
Great. But having three hours, it's good because it spreads it all out. So people don't all come at once.
I'll move to her second.
Thank you all very much.
Melissa, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, good night.
How are you doing, Mark? Hanging in there?